Welcome everyone to the school district mystery lake reorganization meeting for the school year twenty twenty five, twenty six. My name is Kelly Nutt, Secretary Treasurer. I will be running the meeting until we have the election of the Chairperson and Vice Chairperson for this coming school year. I'd like to acknowledge that we are signatory to treaty five and that we reside in the traditional territory of the initial way of seeking pre-nation. The school district is located in the community of Thompson in the province of Manitoba. Manitoba is located on the traditional ancestral land of the Nehito, Inananu, Denesalun, Maki, Inanu, and Isinenu, and the Shiname, and the Kode Oi nations. The school district of Mystery Lake, we're being committed to honoring treaties in the spirit of truth and reconciliation. We are all treaty people. At this time, the agenda has been circulated and we now have a motion to accept the agenda as circulated. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as presented? I do note that item fourteen seven with relation to board negotiating committees, a the board pension committee. That is not a negotiating committee, that is just a standard board committee, so we will move that to item fourteen point eight from fourteen seven. Trustee Anderson, Trustee Nicholas Sa, do you approve that motion as amended?
Yes.
Hope for the hope, all in favor of the agenda?
Yeah, can we just make a note?
Yes, uh, thank you, Trustee Sharper. Trustee Tomaszewski is joining us electronically this evening. Trustee Tomaszewski, how do you vote?
I will, yes.
Thank you. Are you able to hear us?
I sure can.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start this evening for first call for nominations for the Chairperson. If there is more than one person being nominated for a position, we do have ballots to conduct a particle or a secret ballot if necessary. At this time, first call for nominations. For, oh, sorry, for Chairperson. Do we have nominations for Chairperson?
Chairperson Warner Brown. Or Trustee Warner Brown.
Trustee Warner Brown, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Second call for nomination of Chairperson. There is none. Third call for nomination of Chairperson. Having no further nominations, Trustee Warner Brown will be the Chairperson for twenty five, twenty six. We're now for Vice Chairperson, first call for nominations for Vice Chairperson.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Tomaszewski.
Trustee Tomaszewski nominates Trustee Tomaszewski. Trustee Tomaszewski, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Second call for nomination, Vice Chairperson. There is none, third call nomination, Vice Chairperson. There being no other nomination for Vice Chairperson, Trustee Tomaszewski will be Vice Chairperson for twenty five, twenty six. At this time, I'll now have the leading over to Chairperson Warner Brown to the rest of the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Secretary Treasurer. I welcome everybody from the summer, hope everybody had a restful break. We welcome students and staff administration back to the fall term. Look forward to a full school year, we have lots of challenges and lots of exciting things in front of us. Uh, we have before us previously circulated the adoption for the minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty five. Can I have someone move that we accept the minutes from June tenth? Uh, Trustee Sharper, uh, seconded by Trustee Nicholas Sa. Any comment discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, delegations and presentations, seeing none. Item number ten, visits from previous board meetings, seeing none. Item number eleven, superintendent report. Oh, look, it's not superintendent up anymore, did you get promoted?
So I have provided you with all of the written reports. There was a number of hires over the summer months and into late June. I'd like to say we were fully staffed in June and then we had a few people have a change of heart over the summer, but we started school with all complimented teaching staff. I was in attendance at a number of meetings over the summer as well as into, or late June. I also attended a number of meetings throughout the month of July with stakeholders regarding the wildfire situation. I just want to comment that as being part of those meetings, they were initially when things were quite bad, they were pretty much every day. Just being a part of that group and the people there, I felt like they did a fantastic job. We were well prepared. If this city was to have to have evacuated, we were prepared and believe me, they did everything they could to avoid that. I, I was just absolutely amazed with some of the people and the knowledge and just some of the things that were, and they, I mean, some of them were working around the clock. I mean, our rule essentially is if people were to be evacuated, it was we were going to use the schools as muster points. Uh, for those people maybe didn't have a ride out of town, walk to your, go to your local school, which you could probably get to quite easily. And then with transportation would have been arranged to get out of the city from there. The other thing I'd like to do is thank staff because there were people that volunteered to stay behind at the muster points. To ensure that people, you know, got on or got a ride out of town and were willing to forego vanishing with their family until that happened, so. And yeah, that was, but yeah, I can't say how well prepared, I believe, the city was and just how well, how much people, how hard people worked during that time. And on September third, the entire district attended a district wide professional development day. That was everybody that was included, so we had one of Thompson's own, Stephen de Groot, talking about just getting to better and being able to to handle the stresses of day-to-day life. And then we had the comedian, Big Daddy Tass, who also has a very heavily themed mental health. So it was basically a theme for the day was wellness. And yeah, it was everybody, it was custodians, maintenance, and teachers, so we had a, probably pretty close to five hundred people in that.
Wow.
And the feedback I received was very positive. Are there any questions?
Any question for superintendent?
Thank you. Do you have the record for this presentation, like if you can share through our website so that if someone is missing, if I'm interested to see the lecture for this?
I do believe we'll tape it.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know if he taped it, I was trying to confirm it's not with him, but yeah, he was definitely there, so.
Super, any other questions?
I have a question, but congratulations on your new role.
Oh, well, thank you very much.
She's had practice. Uh, item number twelve, I'd like to welcome a new member of the team to this prestigious hall. Assistant Superintendent Jolene Brown, welcome. And we have a report to share with you.
We do have a report. So I've attached a written report, a number of different meetings or events that I've attended. Just a few highlights in the seven days that I've been in role. I've been working to establish contacts regarding our grants specifically with the department. Looking to complete some templates or even acquire templates. As well as had some meetings with various representatives of the different areas for them to give me some background on those grants. And what's kind of the criteria for those grants going forward. I was also able to meet with the student services team, so I pulled the student services administrator in with curriculum services. Acknowledging that we're all working to support students. So we just talked about our respective areas and looked at developing a year of a glance and how student services inclusive education can work to complement curriculum services work and provide some opportunity perhaps for some more inclusive opportunities for some of our students that have additional needs in those different events that are held throughout the year and just even prepping some of our staff to pre-teach some of those students that have difficulties with transitions or events that are not as structured. So we spent the morning talking about how we can do that as well as they filled me in on some of their current programming initiatives. And then looked at some direction that we can head for the year, so. We also had to develop some different registration addendums because there's been a change to right-to-attend school legislation with the addition of living with a responsible adult, so students that arrive in Thompson, if they are living with a responsible adult, can register within our schools. But there's addendums to the registration form regarding if they have parental consent or no parental consent that have to be completed, so we have shared those with all the schools and just even the co-main of those students fill the track if they are here living with a responsible adult for our EIS recording at the end of the month. And then just helping with the transition with the student services administrator as part of a transition plan. The administrative assistant in that department also has resigned, her last day was Friday, so we have a complete new team. So just trying to help with that transition and ensure there's some continuity of some of the different programming that has been happening with our students, especially with respect to clinical referrals. So that's what I've been up to for the last seven days.
Thank you.
Busy, the ground warming.
Yeah, any questions for Assistant Superintendent? The first seven days have been very auspicious, it's a good one. Okay, item number thirteen, Secretary Treasurer's report.
Circulated in your board packages are check registers for the month of June, July, and August. Expenditures for the month of June had accounts payable of two million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars, fifty-nine cents. Included in that amount is payroll-related items of one million, eight fifty-three, three hundred thirty-two. Teacher payroll was two million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars, eighty-seven cents. Support pay was one million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, seventeen dollars, nineteen cents. Our recommendation at this time is that the expenditures for June twenty twenty five for the total amount of six million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred nine dollars, sixty-five cents be approved.
Okay, so we have before us the recommendation from Secretary Treasurer for the expenditures for June twenty twenty five in the amount of six million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred nine dollars and sixty-five cents be approved. Can I have someone so moved? Uh, Trustee Nicholas Sa moves, can I have someone second? Trustee Young seconds. Uh, any questions or discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no opposed, carry.
For the month of July, accounts payable of three million, one hundred forty-three thousand, sixty-seven dollars, fifty-three cents. Those process included in that amount are payroll-related items of one million, eight hundred forty-five dollars, seven hundred, eight hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred one dollars, excuse me. Teacher payroll was two million, fourteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars, eighty-seven cents. Support staff was eight hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars, thirty-nine cents. We forward the recommendation that the expenditures for July twenty twenty five for the total of five million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred eighty dollars, seventy-nine cents be approved.
So we have before us the recommendation that the expenditures for July twenty twenty five in the amount of five million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents be approved. Can I have someone so moved? Uh, Trustee Humby moves, seconded by, uh, Trustee Sharper, any discussion, questions? Move it to the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing none, just move.
For the last month, for August twenty twenty five, accounts payable two million, four hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars, thirty-six cents. Again, the payroll-related items total one hundred, one million, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars. Teacher payroll was one million, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars, seventy-eight cents. Non-teaching payroll was six hundred thirteen thousand, eight hundred eighteen dollars, ninety-nine cents. We forward the recommendation that the expenditures for August twenty twenty five, totally four million, nine hundred five thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars, thirteen cents be approved.
We have before us the recommendation from Secretary Treasurer that the expenditures for August twenty twenty five in the amount of four million, nine hundred five thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents be approved. Can I have someone so moved? Uh, Trustee Young, seconded by, uh, Trustee Humby, any discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry.
The expenditures year-to-date update, we're very freshly into the new year as of September fifth. We have total year-to-date expenses of seven million, five hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars. So we see a heavier spend right now year-to-date, fourteen percent of the plan because we're only a few million into the season. But you'll know that a lot of our summer expenditures where it comes to maintenance projects now have occurred, so will their front-end expenditures and very little expense is expected for the rest of the year in those areas. There's nothing concerning that at this time. Preliminary at this time is a projected surplus. We are looking at coming in at the four percent level once we review fully designated. We'll go through these details in the finance committee meeting in two weeks and we forward the recommendation with the financial statements. The undesigned deficit for June thirtieth, twenty twenty five at this time is being recommended to nine one hundred four thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars. The audit is in progress at this time, we're just confirming and finalizing all the schedules.
Super, any questions for Secretary Treasurer regarding the expenditures? Okay, thank you so much, Kelly. Uh, thirteen point three, the Westwood School architectural design update.
So, um, just a brief update, in August, the first week of August, we had an onsite tour with the architect, designer, and staff tech. Project requirement discussions took place, we toured similar schools to determine the like-kind equality here within the district for the direction of Westwood School. We also took a look at one of the ideal sites to get and to introduce them to what we consider an ideal site when we're looking at that designs and the boiler spaces at the old school, night of classrooms and hallways. We do have a working session coming up with focus groups that will be receiving invites and it will take place September eighteenth, twenty twenty five. We finalized an agenda today that will be circulated tomorrow. So there will be a floor plan for review and site design and option discussions. Uh, the landscape architect will also be in attendance during that time.
It's September eighteenth.
On September eighteenth.
Does that actually mean all things mean? Uh, do you have the? Jolene has the agenda.
The stakeholder time slot.
Next Thursday. Is this something you would want trustees to be at?
There's this time slot.
Yeah, there's a time slot, okay, so folks next Thursday. In the evening, I'm assuming?
No, no, it's during, it's during the day, they fly in for the day.
They fly in in the morning and then they're gone and that's their day.
Okay, so Jolene, you'll get those timings to us?
Yeah. So he just sent this afternoon the actual invite. So the first group will be at ten thirty. We'll have a U C N rep, City of Thompson rep, school board trustee rep with provincial reps. Um, then at eleven thirty to twelve thirty will be the school board trustee group. Uh, then at one thirty will be school admin and teacher reps from Westwood School, reps from parent council of Westwood, and a trustee rep. That session goes till three, and then three to four will be senior admin, student service administrator, and school board trustee rep till four o'clock. So the invites will go out tomorrow because they just sent me the agenda this afternoon.
Could you say the, the, the timings again for when the trustees would be expected, twelve thirty to one thirty?
Yeah, so the trustee-only session is eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
Oh, eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
And then we're hoping that there could be a trustee rep at each of the groups to hear from the different stakeholders.
Okay, so.
So it's ten thirty to eleven thirty.
Ten thirty to eleven thirty.
And then one thirty to three.
So if some of us can make most of the day available, that would be a good thing.
Yeah, and three to four.
Senior administration is going to be in attendance at all of it, that should be, if you will, the board that they want to attend all of those stakeholders. Um, we will help for trustee representative, whether it be chair of the property finance committee or who's ever available or is very interested in.
So there's a lunch break in there from twelve thirty to one thirty. And they have to be wrapped up because they fly in, so they arrive at nine thirty that morning and they fly home that night, so they have to be back to the airport for five.
The construction schedule at this time, we are looking at going to tender at the end of April to have shovels in the ground for next summer to prepare for September twenty eighth. It's quite a round bit.
Yes.
Sequence of events.
Okay, well, thank you. Fourteen, new business, fourteen point one, request for reserve. The rebuild of Westwood School of like-kind and quality and building code upgrade will be funded with insurance proceeds. Funds for all betterments and enhancements will be the responsibility of the district. Redirecting operating expenditures for Westwood facility from twenty-four, twenty-five school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven could assist with funding district design priorities. Request for authorization for new reserves are due by September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to the Education Funding Branch. So before us, uh, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees request approval from the Education Funding Branch for the creation of a capital reserve fund for the district priorities of the Westwood rebuild betterment project, which are ineligible for insurance coverage to a maximum amount of five million dollars. So, uh, we'll move, we'll discuss this, can I have someone move that we discuss? Uh, Trustee Humby, seconded by, Trustee Nicholas Sa. Uh, Kelly, did you want to speak to this?
So I put it in the top of the letter, request of the goal to Education Finance Branch should the request for reserve be approved tonight. Insurance is providing like-kind equality with building codes. The provincial standards for education far exceed building code standards. And the ins, uh, example of this is daylighting. The provincial codes for education, uh, indicate windows in all classrooms. We know, coming from our envelope upgrades, we know the benefits that enhanced daylighting in classrooms have. The situation we're in, or these are not solid numbers, it's just as an example, if Westwood School had twenty-four windows, that is what insurance will pay for. If we have twenty-eight classrooms, we get twenty-four windows. If we want windows in every classroom as an education standard, if that is our priority to go for daylighting, we need a fund to draw from for the additional windows. At this time, where there is no provincial funding for this project, it's considered an insurance buildup. So part of our focus groups and our, our stakeholder meetings will need to identify our district priorities of what we want. If we identify that we want windows everywhere in, on our, or along all, outside, all the classrooms, we need to be able to have that pool to draw from, if that's our first priority. The designers will identify, okay, to add these extra windows, this is how much it's going to cost outside of insurance proceeds, and then we will reuse those funds. I've identified five million dollars as reserve, um, just as a high level estimate, ten to fifty percent contingency on the overall building of the project. It's fifty-five thousand square feet, so I calculated just under a thousand dollars per foot for building for ten percent, that's where I came up with five million dollars. We don't just take five million dollars and put it in an account. This past year, June thirtieth, we have in our budget hydro build for Westwood School, lighting cost for Westwood School. We didn't have any of that, so those are operating costs that we could redirect into a reserve to assist with the priorities or the betterments that we want to see for Westwood School. And as we progress through the year, um, we have identified, we have where we're not being able to fully staff or there might be some vacancy overlap. Those may be other opportunities where we can redirect into the capital fund. In order for us to have a capital fund who require Education Funding Branch approval, those approvals are required by September fifteenth, so we have to put on tonight's agenda to meet the deadline. We may not get up to five million, but we have to have a, the Education Funding Branch will not allow us to have a reserve of an unknown amount. We have to put it over on, so that's where it's five million. If we end up only equally able to redirect seven hundred and fifty thousand, then that's what it is, but we do have a maximum.
So this is the maximum amount we can propose by five million?
We can propose whatever we wish, it's my rationale to support and request for reserve was ten percent of fifty-five thousand square feet.
So another, so did you take consideration about the, if we want to build a daycare and if you want to build a kitchen for the school main program?
Yes.
Did you include this into this, the five million as a rational?
Uh, the actual daycare cost, we're looking at possible opportunities with partnerships within the community, so we do not have to find all of that. But the community kitchens, um, that type of stuff that wasn't in the existing building would have to come from a different fund. Which would be that bottom line. I just, we have, if we do establish a betterment fund, then we have to identify what our priorities are.
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
So you said like, I'm just, I mean, like the provincial guidelines, you said there's supposed to be a window in every week. So if we, say, I'm not saying this is going to happen, I'm just using this hypothetically because you brought up the windows. Say if one classroom, we decide no window in this one, is that allowed? Or do we have to follow these?
We, it's, we don't have to follow what we refer to as needs or provincial, it's, the provincial guideline or code or guidelines aren't. It's, the provincial guideline or code or guidelines aren't established building code. They, in new builds, that is how they proceed. In a new build of a school, they would have a daycare space attached. We're not a new build whatsoever, so we don't follow under those qualifications. All we follow there is building code improvements to bring our existing building up to code standards. So we're just the rebuild. We may be able to develop a business case to go to the province requesting support for when you windows in classrooms to get better daylighting into the environment, what have you. And they may agree with ours, uh, rationale and provide support. But unless we have that ladder of support from the province, we can't design or build it, so this is where we have to make sure that if we have these capital reserves, we can move forward if that's the will of the board. Um, and at the same time, we can also request the province for provincial support and then be able to read all of those reserves elsewhere if the policy requires. We've had in the past our R D Parker, uh, addition renovation upgrades, um, that we just completed with the province. We had a, a two hundred thousand dollar reserve identified to assist with different projects, uh, enhancements that the board may want to have to assist with the project. And the province, we, our notes usually very favorably when here the board or the district is willing to put some skin in the wound.
Yeah.
Well, when the project is, we did the same thing for Riverside School for the gymnasiums and the extension. We put five hundred thousand dollars to that, to that significant dollar project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, vice chair, do you have any questions?
No idea.
Okay, anybody else? Sounds a very reasonable and well thought out plan. So we have before us the recommendation that the Board of Trustees request, we've already moved and, uh, seconded it. Um, anybody else want to discuss before we move it to the vote? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, carry. Okay. Fourteen point two, appointment of an auditor. In accordance with sections forty one eight of the Public Schools Act and Administration Procedures five point zero two oh, the school board shall appoint an auditor who shall carry out the duties of an auditor under the act. The auditor will be appointed in September or at the first regular meeting of the board. We have before us the recommendation that the board appoint Baker Tilly H M A L L P as a district auditors for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Can I have someone move? Trustee Sharper, seconded by trustee Humby. Any discussion or, uh, questions before we vote? Is there an option?
Uh, locally, no, uh, not, not that I'm aware of. Um, we could circulate to the city. I don't see any advantages, um, to going outside the city of Thompson for. I think the cost would be pretty low.
We could pretty soon locally.
Well, that's good. Okay, good question.
Uh, are our body costs have not increased, um, substantially in the last eight years that?
Well, I can't say that there's anything negative to say about it from the procedures I've seen anyway, so I just didn't know if there was a second option available. Okay, question. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move it to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing none, carry. Borwin Bylaw, fourteen point three, second reading. Borwin Bylaw zero one twenty six is required for the provision of the district's operating line of credit, four million dollars and the visa cards, thirty thousand dollars for senior administration and school administration. The bylaw is renewed on an annual basis, it covers one fiscal year. The first reading of the bylaw took place June tenth, twenty twenty five. The recommendation before us is that the Borwin Bylaw oh one twenty six receives second reading. Can I have someone so move? Trustee Young, seconded by trustee Nicholsaw. Any questions or discussion before we vote?
This is just more about housekeeping.
It's just how it happens every year, right?
Yeah.
And, um, at this time, we have not used our line of credit or, um, overdraft. When I anticipate needing a vote to be required, it plays for the, the bank to, uh, pull.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Fourteen point four, Borwin Bylaw oh one twenty six, third reading. Borwin Bylaw oh one twenty six is required for the provision of the district's operating line of credit, four million dollars and the visa cards, thirty thousand for senior administration and school administration. The bylaw is renewed on an annual basis, it covers one fiscal year. First and second readings have been recorded. The recommendation before us, and yes, this is not D J Goo, is that the Borwin Bylaw oh one twenty six receives the third reading, bylaw reading. Can I have someone so move? Uh, trustee Humby, seconded by trustee Sharper. Having already discussed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good job. Okay, fifteen point four, standing committee.
Fourteen point five.
Well, fourteen point five. Been a long, I get, I'm getting ready for the, the hall. Okay, fourteen point five, standing committee chairpersons. The first in front of us is fifteen point five point one, Education and Programming Committee Chairperson. These are, uh, standing committees of the trustees. Do I have someone move, uh, a chairperson for this year's, uh, Chair of Education Programming Committee?
I'd like to nominate trustee Anderson.
Okay, we have a nomination from trustee Humby for trustee Anderson. Trustee Anderson, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that's the first call. Second call for nominations for a chairperson for the Education Programming Committee. Hearing none, third call for nominations to the Education Programming Chairperson. Hearing none, congratulations to trustee Anderson. Fifteen point five point two, Finance Property Committee Chairperson. Do I hear, uh, first call of nominations for a, the chairperson nomination?
I'll nominate trustee Sharper.
Trustee Young is nominating trustee Sharper. Do you accept?
Yes.
Okay, trustee Sharper accepts. Second call for nominations for the Finance Property Committee Chairperson. Hearing none, third call for nominations for the chairperson. Hearing none, trustee Sharper, you are confirmed as a chairperson for the Finance Committee. Fourteen point five point three, Policy Committee Chairperson. We have before us, uh, the chairperson for the Policy Committee, a first call for nominations for the chairperson.
I am nominating trustee Humby.
Trustee Sharper nominates trustee Humby. Do you accept?
Yeah.
Second call for nominations for a Policy Committee Chairperson. Third call of nominations for Chairperson Policy Committee. Hearing none, uh, congratulations trustee Humby, Chairperson for our Policy Committee. Fifteen point four, fifteen point five point four, my eyes are crossed. Forty, forty five point four, where's that cop? It's a new cop. Uh, we have before us the call, first call for nominations for Chairperson for the Public Relations Committee.
I'm nominating trustee Michelle Niket Shaw as the Chair of the Public Relation Committee.
Trustee, uh, Sharper is nominating trustee Nicholsaw for the Chairperson. Do you so accept?
Yes.
Second call for nominations for Chairperson for the Public Relations Committee. Hearing none, third call for nominations for the Public Relations Committee Chairperson. Hearing none, congratulations trustee Nicholsaw, Chairperson for the Public Relations Committee. Six, fourteen point six point one, Education and Programming Committee Members. Do I hear a nomination for the first member of the Education and Programming Committee?
I can nominate trustee Warner Brown.
I accept, or do I have to give this over to, to a vice chair?
Yes.
I do have to, yeah, I, well, I did not know I was gonna be nominated. Uh, trustee, uh, uh, vice chair, do you mind, uh, holding this one?
Sure, uh, Chairperson Warner Brown, do you accept?
I do accept.
All right, back to you.
Okay. Is there a, uh, nomination for the second person on the committee?
I'll nominate, uh, trustee Nicholsaw.
Trustee Nicholsaw, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, congratulations trustee, uh, Warner Brown and trustee Nicholsaw for the committee. Thank you, Chairperson. Uh, fourteen point six point three, Finance Property Committee Members. Okay, nominations for the first member of the Finance Committee.
I'd like to nominate trustee Young.
Trustee Humby nominates trustee Young. Do you accept?
Yes.
Okay. Second member of the committee.
I'm nominating Michelle Tomasewski.
Uh, trustee Sharper nominates vice chair. Do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Any other, uh, nominations for the Finance Committee? Hearing none, congratulations, uh, trustee, uh, Young and trustee Tomasewski to the Finance Committee. Fourteen point six, six point five, Public Relations Committee.
No, policy.
Policy Committee, fourteen point six point four, Policy Committee. Right. My hand and my eyes are not agreeing. Uh, do I hear nominations for the first committee member for, uh, the Policy Committee?
I'll nominate, uh, trustee Nicholsaw.
Trustee Nicholsaw, do you accept?
Yes.
A second nomination for the, uh, second member of the committee. I will nominate, uh, vice chair. Vice chair, do you accept?
I do.
Any other, uh, nominations for the committee? Hearing none, congratulations trustees Nicholsaw and Tomasewski to the Policy Committee. Fourteen point six point five, the Public Relations Committee. Do I hear, uh, nominations for the first member of the Public Relations Committee?
I'll nominate, uh, trustee Humby.
Trustee Young is, is nominating trustee Humby. Do you accept?
Yes.
Okay. I have also the second member of the Public Relations Committee.
I'll nominate, uh, trustee Young.
Trustee Nicholsaw is trust, uh, nominating trustee Young. Do you so accept?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other nominations for that committee? Hearing none, congratulations trustees Humby and Young to the Public Relations Committee. Fourteen point seven, the, uh, negotiating committee with the United Steelworkers. We have before, oh, okay, wait, this is a nego, there's a term extension. We have before us a recommendation to allow continuity on the current U S W negotiations. The recommendation before us is to allow existing committee to remain intact. The recommendation before us is that trustee Young and trustee Nicholsaw continue their positions for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year on the United Steelworkers Negotiating Committee. Can I have someone so move? Trustee?
Um, uh.
No.
Conflict?
Yeah.
Sorry, conflict, sorry.
Okay, trustee Humby, uh, moves. Do I have a seconder? I'll, I'll second, I'll second that. Uh, any discussion before we move it to the vote?
Just so everyone knows that these people have already been working on this, that's why they're sitting.
Yes.
Yeah, we're, we're, we are in the midst of negotiating, starting to lose at this point.
Yes, so it's just good for the public to know, we are in the midst of negotiating and it's bad form to change the committee in the middle of it.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any dissent? Hearing none? Fourteen point seven point two, the S D M L Pension Plan. Do I have anybody to nominate, uh, for the, uh, pension plan?
I'm nominating trustee Anderson.
Trustee Sharper is nominating trustee Anderson. Do you so accept? Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, congratulations trustee Anderson. Fourteen point eight, Board Representation to the Community. I think we've agreed that's everybody, that's all, all of us. Uh, fourteen point eight point one, School Assignments. Okay, Secretary Treasure, do you have a pen and paper?
I do.
Okay, E. Cole Riverside is trustee Humby. Deerwood is trustee Young. Burnwood is trustee Anderson. Juniper is trustees Nicholsaw. Wobunok is myself. Westwood, trustee Sharper. And I, vice chair, where, where were you again?
I was with trustee Nicholsaw.
So Juniper, okay, so Juniper is, uh, trustees Nicholsaw, vice chair. And then R D Parker, of course, will be all of us. Yep.
Was you in Wobunok?
Wobunok, me. I heard they got a new barbecue where they can fit up to seventy hot dogs.
That's a perfect place for you.
And I think, I think that's maybe my first thing to do is to go, to work over that, that new barbecue. Is it so, Jolene? It's supposed to be a big one.
I haven't seen it yet.
Oh, it's a big school, so big barbecue, yeah. Okay. Uh, fourteen point eight point two, Adolescent Health Education Committee AHEC member. Can I have someone move, uh, oh, sorry? Oh, we're talking about. A little bit long, Dave. Uh, can I have someone move, uh, a member for that, uh, committee, AHEC?
Uh, vice chair Tomasewski would like to nominate, uh, trustee Humby.
The vice chair nominates trustee Humby. Do you so accept?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, congratulations trustee Humby. Uh, fourteen point eight point three, uh, twenty twenty six Manitoba Games. This is gonna be a big one, folks. This is, uh, March, it's coming. Uh, can I have someone nominate, uh, one of our members to sit on this committee?
I'll nominate, uh, trustee Anderson.
Uh, trustee Young is nominating trustee Anderson. Do you so, accept? Okay. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, congratulations trustee Anderson. Uh, fourteen point nine, liaison committee is, uh, everybody. Fourteen point nine point, uh, one is the city liaison, that's all trustees. Fourteen point nine point two, Thompson Teachers Association Liaison, that's important for you too, because you get to have all of us. We like Chinese, we like, we redo home cooking if you want to bring home cooking with you. No, congratulations, good. Uh, fourteen point nine point three, U S W Labor Management Committee is all trustees, yeah. Uh, fourteen point, uh, one zero, ratification. So we have before us a host of committees. The recommendation is that the results for the reorganization of the positions of September ninth, twenty twenty five be ratified. Can I have someone so move? Trustee Sharper, seconded by? Uh, trustee Young, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, folks, good job. Smooth sailing now for the next twelve months. Destruction of ballots, secretary treasure, can you destroy those ballots?
No, that's fine.
That's fine, okay, good. Uh, fourteen point one two, signing authority. We have before us the recommendation of the chairperson, myself, I, I won't, okay, maybe, uh, this isn't a conflict, is, the vice chair should move this? Or you'll take it?
No, she's not taking it.
Yeah, because both of us.
But we're all, uh, recommending.
Recommendation at this time is that chairperson Warner Brown, vice chairperson Tomasowski, superintendent Barlow, and secretary Turner not being signed, the third effective September ninth, twenty twenty-five.
You asked for proof.
All mover, please. Trustee Nicholsaw, second. Trustee Humby. Any comments, concerns? All for the vote, all in favor? Uh back to chairperson Warner Brown.
Fifteen, Correspondents, fifteen point one, Manitoba School Boards Association. Uh it's circulated in our emails. I think I'll, I'll just take that. I was meeting with the executive yesterday with the Manitoba School Boards Association, so I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, I think I sent an email last week or the week before. Um the region for trustees are meeting together in October, October twentieth, it's a Monday. It's uh the region, so with all the trustees from Kelsey, from Flintlock, from Mystery Lake and from Frontier are invited. Do we have, we're gonna have a motion next meeting, are we?
For trustees that are interested in attending, let me know with a motion paper travel.
Yeah, so the executive is very keen that as many trustees go as possible. So if it's at all possible, that you folks can go. We'll do, we'll share, share cards or whatever. The way it's worked is that the, the meeting's on Monday, but there's also U C N has linkages on the Tuesday and Wednesday. And so the provincial executive, including the president and the vice presidents are intending to stay for the linkages. They're going to stay at U C N and go to that conference, that conference is free. And I believe uh from what I hear from the executive from yesterday, they also encourage senior leadership to attend as well. So you three or you two at least might want to think about coming if, if it's in cards. Uh so that's October twentieth, so put that, save the date and think seriously about doing it. Um at that meeting, I have a tentative agenda, but it will include resolutions for putting forward. You know how since June we've been talking about the resolutions? They want us, the boards, to bring resolutions to that meeting. So part of the exercise, we have one more meeting, and then we have another meeting in October, so we have two more meetings after this one. And they want to have resolutions for that, but that's, yeah, go ahead.
Uh the memo from M S B A, the deadline for draft resolutions is October first.
Yeah, okay, so we have really one more meeting. Yeah, so we want to think seriously, go ahead.
I want to see if this would happen to any of the resolutions that we brought forward today, so what's the point of making amendments?
Included in the next two packages are the resolutions and the action items that are a result of.
Good, you know, that's something we can discuss on October. Um the president probably have.
The resolutions and resolutions are all in the next two documents.
Yeah. And I think we do have a laundry list of things we, you know, we're playing with. I think it could be around the nutrition program, or we can come up with a resolution around lunch, lunch supervision or.
Transit, trans.
Transportation, lots of things we could talk about, the insurance. Okay, fifty point one point one, call for resolutions and, right, this is kind of, oh, you kind of got ahead of yourself. So there's uh fifty point one point one is the call for resolutions and nominations, so that's due October first. Uh so put that in the cooker and think about what we could do. We can bring together as a board, so that when we meet together in October twentieth, we can vote on them as a, as a region. Uh M S, okay, so the M S B A policies, a request that's there for your reading. Fifteen point one point two, Fall General Meeting and Professional Development Day. So there's a memo from M S B A for the Fall General and Regional Meetings. So you see here, they're reaching for, uh right now, the, the intention is for the Kikowak. So probably, you know, we'll want to get those, because it is linkages as well, so we'll want to book those, not wait too long on that, but. The regional meeting, so there's a little description there, works available for the regional meeting. Professional Development Day is there, Monday, November twenty-fourth, and that's at the Victoria Inn. That's there for your reading, a block of rooms is available, registration deadline for that is October tenth. We'll have to decide if we're going to send someone. I don't even know if I can go to that one. It gets busy. Well, Kelly, can we revisit this next meeting? Everybody check your, check your calendars. Okay, uh fifteen point one point three, Forty-third Spring Legislation Update. Uh we have before us the legislation update, provincial bills and private members bill, that's also from the M S B A. So there are lots of moving parts. Um you're going to notice this, this year, this year's provincial executive is very hands-on, it's very, hands-on is the wrong way to say it, is, they have lots of things, very ambitious. And so there's going to be a lot of literature coming out, I think, over the next year. Um committee reports. That we had not really time to meet yet, so I'm going to assume Policy Committee has not met, Education Programming not met, Public Relations not met, Finance Committee not met, other committees not met, yeah?
Finance is scheduled for September twenty-third.
Okay, so Finance, do we have any dates yet for the others?
Not yet, no.
No, how about you two, have you decided the assignments yet?
Yeah, we're gonna, Jolene's gonna do it, programming, I'm gonna do policy and P R.
Okay, okay.
Before the next board meeting.
What's that then?
The finance meeting is there before the.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll have to be in our own policy before.
Yeah, okay.
Before the end.
Excellent. Okay, uh item number seventeen, trustee comments. We'll start, we'll start with trustee Anderson, we're going to be this week.
Welcome back. Senior consideration. And zip. Everyone is good staying here. And we're late tomorrow, we're going to Artie Parker's color.
Right.
Color room, yeah.
I don't know, that's too bad to miss that.
It's really in motion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not just for Artie Parker's speeches, Westwood is also.
The junior high.
And I think the weather's going to cooperate?
Uh there's anything like today, today was gorgeous. Um yeah, I mean, oh, I skipped the audio at the end. Welcome back, everybody, that's all I appreciate.
Yeah, just echo my colleagues, welcome back everyone.
Same for me, welcome back, I look forward to another year.
I'd like to congratulate all of my colleagues for reorganizing the board, board chair, vice chair. I also like to congratulate our superintendent, accepting the new position and the assistant superintendent, Jolene. And I can see the new initiative from the Thompson teacher association, I believe so.
Super. Vice chair, do you have any comments?
Uh no, everybody's kind of echoed everything, so have a good school year.
Yeah, absolutely, thanks, and yeah, I was, I spent the day yesterday with my colleagues, I was virtual, but I was with the Manitoba Executive, uh yesterday they were meeting in Winnipeg. And they're very keen for the regional, you know, there's been a long time since before COVID, since they've really been on the road. Some of you will remember last October, we met virtually, remember we met in the seminar room? And that was a useful exercise, so expect that, but this one will be in person. And like I said, I do encourage you, the U C N conference, which is two days afterwards, it's free. The food will be very good, uh the, the content will be interesting. So if you can make it for the one day, that's super. Um if you can come for the three days, that's even better, I understand most of you have your time constraints and that type of thing. Uh and that's about it, I, there again, I welcomed the new executive from the teachers, I welcomed our new assistant, and I, I want to uh to welcome all the new teachers, I saw, I was able to meet the new teachers last week, how many, twenty-eight?
Uh I believe there were twenty-eight.
It was a, it was a goodly summer, and they were all very excited, and trustee Anderson and myself were able to have lunch with them, eh? And it was a really nice to see all bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, ready to go.
I ran into a few and asked how things are going, everybody's really happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, and enjoying Thompson.
Yeah.
It's true, very positive.
You know, and there was a pretty big U C N.
Take them on the road with me when I go recruit.
Yeah, well, sometimes so, sometimes so, bring a young pup with you, and I think sometimes your biggest advocate are the young recruits that you, from your previous years, right? Uh and there was a, there's a significant U C N cohort as well, which is good to see.
Yes.
You know, that's nice to see grow her own, right? And all that, so, okay, well, thank you so much, uh question from the public?
I just have one question though, I kind of wear two hats, so.
Absolutely.
My name is Mario Lo, and I'm vice president of the Thompson Teachers Association. Uh like I said in the beginning, back around two, I did this about twenty years ago, so.
Oh, you took a good break.
Kind of twisted my arm a little bit, so. Um but I have a question about, so put my other hat on, I am a western school teacher. Um so just a question about the stakeholders meetings next week. At this point, are parents going to be involved in any of those stakeholder meeting? I don't think, Jolene, you indicated that when you had the times for different people.
Parent council, right?
Parent council, okay, so is that who's going to consider speaking for, right, the parent, the parent community?
Yeah, okay. So that, that was why I'd asked for an agenda to be sent as soon as possible, so we could notify stakeholders, so that the parent council wanted to discuss with the wider parent community.
Right.
They could do that quickly, to get some feedback from them to bring to that meeting.
We had first thought that they would perhaps be able to hold a meeting.
Yeah, that's I think what we.
That was not our expectation. That they may have, that's.
So there's still be. This one, yeah.
Not for this one.
Will there be another consultation process?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, I know. I mean, part of the issue being is that, I mean, we're, we're also trying to get shovels in the ground.
Exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, and I mean, with light quality and kind, I mean, certainly some things that, yes, some input, but it's uh.
It's not about that.
No, no.
So just further than that, when you talked about the kitchen for, which would be kind of for the nutrition program, I know that some of the schools kind of added kitchens because of the new nutrition program, the community schools, I guess.
Yes.
So um I guess that's where that money would come from, but Westwood's not a community school as of yet, so that would be.
Was there a community kitchen in Westwood School when we?
Uh well, there was an ideal site kitchen, it wasn't a.
So the, the ideal site kitchen, uh kitchen area, all of that was identified as.
It will maintain a like stills programming, like the washer, dryer, kitchen area.
Okay.
In order to be able to continue that programming that was established.
And I'm assuming with that nutrition funding that was to receive, that there probably, there was, there must have been in that budget some room for equipment that probably was not purchased because we had no, but the equipment.
Uh no, they purchased them at the locations.
Oh, okay, so they didn't get quite the, like, there were some schools that got it considerable, the community schools got it considerable.
No, they didn't have this large a budget.
Magical.
But again, that would be where we've established a reserve, if it is a district priority, you put a community kitchen in the school as opposed to what other priorities we have to identify. What are top priorities, what are the requirements for them? Because being sure that if, like, if we had it, they will assist you in that building.
Yes, and like, when I went to the Westwood teachers, I said, yeah, this new school will not be built in the shape of a head of a Viking. Yeah, it's gonna be some boxes.
With a big helicopter.
Well, I'd tweet.
Yeah. That would be cool. Any other questions? Good question. All good? All right, well, thank you. Can I have someone move, we go into camera? Uh trustee Nicholsaw, seconded by trustee Sharker. All over the paper? Thank you so much. Thank you.